As they do out there, duties each day. We ask God that each item will be presented, will be guided by you, Father, and we just trust in you that you take control of our lives and protect us during this weekend as we celebrate the Easter season and we just count your blessings at this time and then it was just Christ our Lord, pray.
Amen.
Place the flag, Henry Verhart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is a roll call, Ms. Israel.
Here.
Mr. Sines.
Here.
Mr. Best.
Present.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Pacifica.
Here.
And Mr. Geigels.
Here.
All members are present. Item number three, uh, four is the consent agenda. Item number A is approval of the minutes of the regular session of March 19th, 2015, and B is approval of the replat review on Franklin Place Subdivision lots one through four.
Mayor.
Mr. Geigels.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular session of March the 19th, 2015, and also A, and then B, approval of the replat review for the Franklin Street subdivision.
Second.
And seconded to approve the consent agenda, item number A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of March 19th, 2015, and item number B, approval of the replat review of Franklin Place subdivision lots one through four. Any discussion? The honor proceeded the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five is presentation of Atascosa Superior President District Report. Mr. Larry Pippen.
Mayor, you're not the excuse, kind of slow today.
Not in a hurry.
I worked in my yard and it's, I finally had to reach the age that I'm maturing way before my time. I'm getting to be just as old as Abraham and that's getting older.
Don't be bragging about that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, City Manager, and your staff, have you read all the material that I presented to you? Do you have any, I think it's a lot easier for me to answer your questions.
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Pippen? Mr. Garza.
I was wondering, how much are we getting back on the refund on the budget?
It should be, I believe, what, nine thousand? About nine thousand. And it'll be done in two quarters. It'll be the second quarter, I think, and the third quarter is what I've been told.
Also, I wanted to ask, how much money did we spend on attorney's fees on the suits that took place?
Uh, I believe the total attorney fees for the company now was 333,000, what they expended. They have waived those attorney fees, but it did affect the, the two main taxing entities of Atascosa County, which is a county, and Girinton Independent School District, which was quite a phenomenal amount, so, in refund.
Did, did, sorry, did the board have, get to vote on, on settling the suits?
That's one of our discussions that we continuously have, and we feel, there's a couple of us that feel that, that the board should be responsible to approve any and all proposed lawsuits.
Or settlements.
And we discussed that real thoroughly on the 19th of March, and they have allowed the chief appraiser and the attorney to, to do this, in which I disagree highly. I think that the board is neglecting the responsibility to the taxpayers of Atascosa County, and the biggest thing, I do not think that our representative is, and I'm one of them now, that we have been derelict to our responsibilities to you as the taxing body, to inform you what's going on in these lawsuits, or give you the opportunity to express your opinion. I think the mayor should be given an opportunity to, to listen to what we have to talk about, and then him make a decision, which he wishes to bring it before the council. But I don't think no taxing entity should be bypassed in any one of these lawsuits that could be filed, because it's a shame that the taxing entities have no say-so when they, they've got to come up with a tremendous amount of money, and I believe Pleasanton, last year came up with, what, 16,000 that they had to refund, which is very minor compared to, to other taxing bodies, that it's not budgeted, that's the biggest thing, it's not budgeted, and we're not being transparent to, to the taxpayers and to the public, it's a shame, so.
What was our city's percentage? What was the city of Pleasanton have to pay what percentage on those lawsuits?
Uh, I think it's gonna be, what is it, 9,000? No, I don't know yet. It's, they have not given us a breakdown of that, but it's all based on the assessed value, 'cause I, I know when they started the lawsuit, and don't quote me, I'm doing this by memory, but I think in 2012, I think the mine came up with 104, no, 104,000, appraisal district came up with 130, somebody, excuse me, it's million.
Million.
And this went on and went on, it's gone on for, you know, for three years, and then, then it's finally settled, and it was a very drastic settlement as far as affecting the two major taxing bodies.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mayor.
Ms. Israel.
I just have a couple of clarifications, because, and, and I want everybody, I agree with you 100% that the, the taxing entities through their representative should be appraised of lawsuits as they're happening in order to give their input, just pretty much the same, I would think, that we do in executive session, and at that time, we know what the direction is that the lawsuit is heading and so forth, but the first appraised value, and what, and correct me if I'm wrong, I understand that they had the appraised value, had somewhat of negotiations, and the appraised value that the appraisal district had and that San Miguel Electric had was very, very far away from each other, and they had a neutral appraiser, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, which was closer to the original appraisal. I know either way, it wound up, we lost, which means even though the city is, is already locked into the budget, the budget is passed, and then each taxing entity pays a portion of that budget during that period of time when that's locked in, all lawsuits are not settled. But if they're settled and the appraisal district loses, the taxing entities are not credited anything back, so actually we lose both with the, through the attorney and the actual settlement, because we're still paying for it. So, a lot of times you're setting your tax rate before these things are settled, and it can affect you when it's a large amount of money, but what, do you have any idea how close they were as far as the actual final appraisal?
They were not that close. I know the first time it came by, I think it was 104 million, and the appraisal district had it at 130 million. Then it went up to, finally settled for one year, it was 100 million, and then it went down to 80, 60 million, then it went down to 45 million the last year. And also, there's a terminology in there where the appraisal district cannot increase their values for 2015 under the agreement. And again, all this was done, to my knowledge, without the approval of the board, and that's one of our biggest arguments, where we're gonna have, those of us that are, that want the taxing entities to be involved in this stuff.
I appreciate that. Can I make just one comment?
You have the floor.
All right, thank you, sir. And I am familiar that there, right now, there is a bill that's being considered, and I don't know that it has moved through, I'm hoping that it doesn't, but it's a very simple bill, and that bill says that the taxing entities would not any longer be able to disagree with any action that the appraisal district board takes. In fact, if they submit to the pass the way the law has been written, we would have a certain amount of time to respond to it, and this particular bill is out there to try to take away any possible, any possible action that the city council or any other taxing entity can take. It's quite disturbing, to say the least. We're limited already in our participation, even though we're the ones who contracted the appraisal district to do our appraisals. I'll end that comment, and I appreciate your report, sir.
The worst part on that is, if they do that, then they've got to do something with the board or the appraisal district, whether it be elected or what, but if we continue at the rate we're going, the taxing entities have no say-so, and what disturbed me is when I said, "The constituent taxing units rather than the district would be, was potentially liable for refunds, interest, and attorney fees of any lawsuits settled in favor of the party." Very clear, which means you all are double-dipping, you're already paying attorney fees in one way, and we've made two requests for open record. I've got mine, I'm still digesting that, and, and I might have violated your trust, but my agreement with the chairman of the board, Mr. Trell, that if I discover anything that I would first discover, discuss it with him as chairman of the board before, and let him make up his mind, which he used to do, and I think I owe that, you know, to the board, and, but it's gonna be very critical, I'm very worried about the motel, I think I talked to Bruce about this. Maybe Pleasanton is doing all right, maybe, today, but when you start taxing by profit or money that you make, instead of the permits at the motel being built, that, that could be, as a render their assessment this, this year, it's gonna be a large amount of difference between what was assessed last year and what is gonna be assessed this year. So, Girinton probably is gonna suffer the most if the oil boom continues the way it's going, so, be difficult, so. And we didn't win on our once-in-a-month meeting day. There were six votes against us, so it fell 6-2, so we'll, we'll continue trying, so.
It can come up again.
Well, I'm sure it will, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Pippen?
Thank you. Thank you for appointing me, I'm having a ball.
Thank you, Mr. Pippen. Item number six is citizens' comments. If you're a citizen or a taxpayer to the city, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Know that council and staff may not comment. We did have one person, and I lost a sheet. Ms. Byrd.
Yeah.
Mine's on 13. Oh, okay, I just saw it under citizens' comments on the sign-in, so, no, we'll wait. If there's no comments, we'll move on to item number seven, which is ordinances and resolutions. Item number A is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1138, establishing rules and regulations regarding sanitation and pollution control of the area in proximity of the city's public water supply wells, and ordinance number 15-1138 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, establishing rules and regulations regarding sanitation and pollution control of the areas in the proximity of the city's public water supply wells.
Second.
We moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1138, establishing, establishing rules and regulations regarding sanitary and pollution control of the areas in the proximity of the city public water supply wells.
Second.
We moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1138, establishing rules and regulations regarding sanitation and pollution control of the areas in proximity of the city's public water supply wells. Any discussion? The honor proceeded the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number B is reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1139, amending the city's general fund budget, and ordinance number 13, 15-1139, is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, amending the 2014-15 budget for the city of Pleasant and repealing ordinances in conflict and declaring emergency.
Mayor.
Mr. Geigels.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number 15-1139, amending the city general fund budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1139, amending the city general fund budget. Any discussion? The honor proceeded the vote as in favor of the ordinance, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number C, and I've been handed the caption to read, or not the caption to read, but the, there's a deviation from what's written on the agenda, but we've talked to the city attorney, and he said this is the way this should be read. So, item C is, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, declaring the unopposed candidates, wait a minute, let me ask you this, Andreas, is this for the caption of the ordinance, or is this for the agenda item?
I should say, reading and adoption.
Sorry. Reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1140, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, declaring the unopposed candidates for the offices of the mayor and city council members of districts four, five, and six as elected, providing that the May 9th, 2015 general election for those offices shall not be held, repealing ordinances in conflict and declaring an emergency. And if somebody would like to, whoever speaks up, I'll hand them the.
Mayor.
Second.
If you hand it to me, I'll read it.
I will do that. Let me read the caption while it's being passed down. The caption of the ordinance is, ordinance number 15-1140 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, declaring unopposed candidates for the offices of mayor and the council members for the districts of four, five, and six as elected, providing that the May 9th, 2015 general election for those offices shall not be held, replacing ordinances in conflict and declaring emergency. Ms. Israel.
Yes, I make a motion to accept, to adopt ordinance number 15-1140. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, declaring the unopposed candidates for the offices of the mayor and council members for districts four, five, and six as elected, providing that the May 9th, 2015 general election for those offices shall not be held, repealing all ordinances in conflict and declaring an emergency. Second.
We moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1140, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, declaring the unopposed candidates for the offices of mayor and council members for the districts four, five, and six as elected, providing that the May 9th, 2015 general election in those offices shall be held, not be held, repealing all ordinances in conflict and declaring an emergency. The only difference for reading that was on the agenda item, they left out, Mayor, and instead of having to do this again, Mr. Maldonado said we can proceed this way. Any discussion? The honor proceeded the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number D is the first reading of ordinance number 15-1141. Let me get to that.
65.
Thank you. First reading adoption of ordinance number 15-1141, adopting water conservation and drought contingency plan for the city of Pleasant, Texas, and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 15-1141 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, repealing and replacing Title V, Chapter 51 of the city of Pleasant and Code of Ordinance, is adopting water conservation and drought contingency plan, establishing data information and policies for water conservation programs, criteria for the initiation and termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, establishing penalties for the violation and provisions of the enforcement of the restrictions, establishing procedures for granting variances, and providing severability and effective date. Item number B is department reports. Mr. Pearson.
This report will be given by John Roberts, our street department superintendent, this evening, and we will follow that with the departmental report given by Ms. Martinez from the library, and we'll proceed to that point with the manager's message and the mayor's message. All other departmental reports are as submitted, Mayor.
Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Water production for March was 4.15 gallons with a daily average of 1.33 million gallons. Utility department crews continue replacing all water systems on Windship Road, from poly-pipe to copper tubing. They also replaced the 500 at Third and Adams Street and Highway 97 and Windship Road. Water main project, contractors began to next water line bore on Highway 97 at Parsons Road by the Longhorn Museum. The water line project is on schedule and anticipate a start time in May. As we sweep pipe and materials inside, we're hoping to get council approval, to get council approval to purchase pipe and materials by April 16th. Landwork, the water turnover contractor has completed all 15 panels of the pedestal and begun work on the grating of the boulder. Atascosa River Cleaning Project, the contractor continues to clean up and chip trees. Recent rains have delayed the removal of sediment along the river's edge. This project is about 75% complete. Parts department mode and prepared to write the river park for turn and burn. Thanks to John Rain and AP Electric, we now have new lighting system at the river park soccer field. Crews installed a backstop netting for the soccer field, they also poured three concrete slabs, and installed three barbecue pits and picnic tables at the river park. The street department continues mowing entrances to the city rideaways. They have mowed grounds along the runways at the airport. We continue to have an issue with a card reader at the airport. If I have a problem with being a phone line, I will be replacing approximately 200 feet of phone line. We also received pricing for the painting of the fuel tank at this time. Thank you, please.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and council members and everyone. I'm Carolina Martinez, I'm the new librarian. I began working on March the 2nd, so it's approximately 27 days that I've been here. I'd like to take a moment to publicly thank the selection committee who recommended me and Mr. Pearson who hired me. I'm very happy being the librarian here. I can see so many things that we can do in the future with the community, and I think it's wonderful, I'm very excited. Pleasanton is a very easy town to fall in love with, and well libraries have been my passion forever, so I think it's a good match.
You're welcome.
So, thank you so much. This report is for February 21st through March the 24th. We've served 4,140 patrons, 3,898 items have circulated, fines were collected, and the number of $537.72. Copies and faxes are really big at the library, $805.10 just between that time period, and we entered 116 new books into the inventory. During my time here, I've been able to visit the Texas State Library, and I met with the director of the Library Development Division, Deborah Latrell, and Christina Manns, who's the head of the library science collection, and they exist to support library staff and the library, to libraries and library staff. And so I'm making sure that staff that is there is aware of that, and that we're keeping in touch with them through blogs and through emails, so that we will know about opportunities that we might be able to take advantage of, that will assist us to become better library, you know, servants to the community. I will be taking a small library management training leadership program in Beeville at the end of this month, and they will also be helping with the Texas Public Library Annual Report for fiscal year 2014, which is due on April 30th. So, I've got a lot of homework to do. Couple of things that we're gonna be focusing on is just assessing the library, finding out where we are, also surveying the community, trying to find out how we can best serve the community. We've gotten a lot of great ideas from various individuals and people who have come and visited that are right here in front of me, and also here. So, really, I'm looking forward to what we were, we will be able to accomplish, and I know it will be a lot, but it's gonna take a little bit of time. We did, Gina will be in charge of our summer reading club, and she got in the newspaper a little blurb that said that we needed volunteers for the summer reading club, and friends of the library actually donated $200 towards that, and so that's a good thing. She also mentioned that we would like to have, show movies, but she didn't know about movie rights, and we now have licensing, we purchased licensing movie rights, and we'll be able to show movies as of next Saturday. And so we can have all kinds of movie events, not only in the library, but also in the civic center, as long as it is a library event. So, we have to look at the civic center as an extension of the library. We've also added the TechShare database program, and the program, I left some of these in the back, so if anyone is interested. With the TechShare database, you can access from the library or from your home or anywhere you, you have internet, information on genealogy, American, West, and Indian heritage cultures, literary reference center, small engine repair and reference, home improvement repair, hobbies and crafts, small business reference, and this is another literary reference, I guess I liked it. And the thing with this is that we cannot, there is a username and a password, we cannot publish, publicly promote that in the newspaper or on our website, but I do have little pieces of paper over there, too, so that you'll be able to take this home and try it, test it out. We haven't promoted it yet, because they are having problems with, with one database, and I'm waiting until they get those glitches worked out, but we already, we already have access to most of them. And, let's see, TechShare databases, in case you're not, you know, they provide electronic research databases available 24 hours a day in the homes or offices of registered patrons of participating Texas libraries. Patrons can access full text articles from journals, newspapers, magazines, ebooks, and more. Database topics include homework help for students, health information, business information, biography, genealogy, literature, and all kinds of great stuff. Now, we're also looking to add some ebook and e-resource options, Kupla, Overdrive, Mango Languages, and Tutor.com, but we're looking at cost right now. So, we're basically gonna be focusing on organization, layout function, and with the priority of creating spaces specifically for children, teens, and adults, reading and filling gaps within our collection, and updating the books and magazines. We've received suggestions from individuals as far as what types of magazines they would like to see that we do not have, Transworld, Skateboarder Magazine, Spin Wired, Sports Illustrated, MacWorld, Photography, ESPN. If you have any suggestions, please let me know, and we're gonna try to meet the needs of the community, so we'll do our best to do that with what, what we have. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, I just have a comment. I'm.
Pacifica.
Yes. I'm real excited about all your ideas, and I, I'm sure that the rest of the council are excited at what you're bringing to our city, and we welcome you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to the mundane city manager's message.
End item number nine.
I have to say that probably the best description I heard was from Mr. Sines. For the first time in my adult life, I've had a library card, and she told me to come to the library, and she issued it to me.
Sure did.
Several staff members have been called to the library and issued a library card.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our, our report this evening starts with our fire station feasibility study and work session. We're asking for a work session at the next council meeting at 6:00 PM. The floor plans, schematics, and renderings, the feasibility study will be the first thing discussed, and the feasibility study centered around, will everyone in this city be within the prescribed mile and a half distance of a library as prescribed by the state ISO? We have centered on location, it's up off Airport Road, it is already on city property. We feel like it not only puts almost every property in the city within a mile and a half of a fire station, but it also gives immediate access down Airport Road back to the 97 corridor where there's some large industry and commercial buildings, and it also gives quick access and reaction time to Oak Forest Estates. And I always get that wrong, am I right? Oak Forest Estates, the far Midwest and Northwest side of the city, which to date has never been within a mile and a half of a fire station. We'll present that with the consultant from RVK, Heath Winrick, and then we'll ask for direction from council for the possible acceptance of the study, the acceptance of the renderings, the acceptance of the floor plan, and move forward at a future date towards the final design of the building. Our Cronos project, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Lozano continue to work on that with the programming administrator with Cronos out of Massachusetts. There was another go-to meeting today, which I participated in somewhat, in and out. We are now signed on to Cronos with, with passwords between Mrs. Martinez, Mrs. Lozano, and myself. He went over a sampling of how the time sheets will look. We're discussing, we're now discussing such things as, how will Cronos know when summertime hours come for public works, for instance, because they go to a 7:00 to 3:30 workshop. Right now, the system's built in for hour lunches. When will they know? And so he is gonna program that, where we will obviously have access, and Mrs. Lozano will automatically input that into the system. We've discussed a number of issues, what we call our out-of-the-ordinary folks, which are the policemen, and as we hire full-time firemen, and how we will accommodate for when overtime kicks in for them. We're getting fairly close. I will tell you that the cables, the ethernet cables have been running the last two days to all six facilities. The clocks, all but one have been programmed. We had one that came in that needed to be sent back. We received a new one today and went back with our information technology consultant today to be programmed. I think we're scheduled for the clocks to be installed next Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. We actually spent about four hours with the consultant that works for us on information technology earlier in the week, and we made trips to all six buildings that the clocks will be mounted in, to not only make sure the clocks are mounted to be accessible for those folks who will use them, but also in a, in a safe manner where it will try to mitigate any kind of tampering, any kind of damage, and so on and so forth. any kind of damage, and so on and so forth. Our Parks Master Plan update. The final citizens' input meeting was held last week. I think there was around 20 to 25 folks in attendance. I know several council members were there. A plan was presented for enhancing the River Park, future plans for other athletic fields to be built and what would be in that River Park. I think a lot of the concerns from some folks in reference to certain venues were alleviated. There's a number of things in that renovation of the River Park that meets some of the wants and the needs of our public and our children as well. We feel very excited about that. I will say that in the coming weeks, if not at the next meeting, we will probably have an amendment to the contract with the Parks Master Plan consultant in front of council, and I'll leave that up to the mayor to discuss at his preference. And that's in reference to our legislative agenda that was declared where a multi-event center and the possible construction of such would take place. FY 2016 budget and schedules. The first departmental budgets were submitted today. They will be continually submitted over the next three weeks. I will tell you that we are ahead of schedule on the budget for next year. Mrs. Lozano, Mrs. Martinez, and myself have already inputted a lot that has to do with employee benefits, the present employees, the number of employees. We also will have numbered positions through this Cronos program that will allow us to look at when positions are really vacant rather than trying to compare who's here and not who's here anymore due to retirement and other things. So that will be a real windfall for us, and it'll make it very easy. The budget message is being prepared. The schedules will be forthcoming in the next couple of meetings. We will try to follow the same agenda or the same format, if you will. For the second meeting in June, there will be a draft budget presented to the council based on amendments added by the council or any changes by the council. Then we would move forward from that to an August 6th meeting where the proposed budget, by requirement of the charter and the local government code, is dictated. Many thanks to Andreas for putting that schedule together. We thought it would take about two days to put that schedule together, and it took him about two minutes to stop what we were doing and look at that schedule with him. Upcoming city council meetings. I will leave that to the mayor. I just will reiterate, we're asking for a 6:00 PM work session. We feel like it will take at least 30 to 40 minutes to do that presentation on the fire station and for interaction with the council, with the consultant, myself, and possibly the fire chief. There's a lot to be considered. I will say that, backing up just a second, we have had contact and discussions with the county judge and the county commissioner that oversees that precinct. The county has some desire and some need, as they feel it, based on calls of service, to have an EMS unit in that new fire station when it does get constructed. They are looking at their budget, and we would hope that that would be forthcoming. And we are making accommodations for an EMS unit to be in that fire station and be housed there. That's our manager's message for this evening, Mayor. I would just say that we're very excited about the things that are going on, but yet we're very cautious and conservative about the economic climate that we might find ourselves in and do find ourselves in. I want to applaud Helen. I want to applaud Mrs. Martinez, and I want to applaud the chief, Mr. Weesdar, and others as we began preparing for this almost five months ago. We do see that it's going to be somewhat of a flat year next year. No doubt about it. We don't want to hedge any bets on this thing. With that, that's my message for this evening. I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Questions for Mr. Pearson, Mayor? Ms. Israel?
I do. I have a question actually on, back on the ordinance number, the first reading of ordinance number 15-1141, adopting a water conservation and drought contingency plan for the city of Houston. I will be interested to see what changes that we are making that are going to be different than what we have at present now. And I realize this was just a first reading, but certainly there is no information that tells us what you're thinking about. And it's certainly something that I'd like to have before. And I think the council would be before we make a final decision on that ordinance.
Bring those major points to you. I will say that there are some, briefly tell you, there are changes in when we declare each stage of conservation. There are changes in the amount of water that dictates how we declare that stage. As you know, we've increased our water inventory with the drilling of the new well. And so we've, I think we've plugged in a 65%, 75%, and 85% of our pumping capacity to declare each stage in sequence. But we will put those major points together. I will tell you that we consulted with a gentleman, has his own business, and this gentleman is a scientist, and he wrote the water conservation rules for TCEQ. He was a member of TCEQ and worked for him for many years. And we consulted him on this ordinance, and he basically is in agreement with everything we have in there. But we will bring those major points to you.
Certainly like to have them before the night that we make the decision.
Sure.
All right. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Comments or questions? Mr. Pearson?
Thank you.
Item number 10 is the mayor's message and announcement. The only announcement I have is we do have a conflict with our 21st of May meeting. Would anybody have any problem with moving that to the 19th of May? It'd be a Tuesday. Mr. Pearson, do you know of anybody that we've invited that might have a conflict?
Well, we haven't invited anyone yet, Mayor, but we did have a meeting with our community partners. They're going to participate in helping us provide some of the amenities for that as far as the food preparation and such. But that meeting was today. We can certainly contact them and tell them at the request of the council, the meeting's been changed to the 19th.
If there's no conflict, then we can move the meeting to the 19th. Okay?
Meeting?
Instead of May 21st, it'll be May 19th. It'll be on a Tuesday. Yeah, Mr. Geigels has a conflict. Ms. Israel had a conflict with the first meeting. Mr. Geigels has a conflict with the second meeting, so we're just going to move it up two days.
Just one thing. What day will we need to have our agenda items in by then?
Wednesday then?
It would be the Wednesday before. We'll also have to check.
Be next Wednesday.
We'll have to also check and ensure that we're not violating anything where the canvassing of the election is concerned. Even though it's not a contested election, there is still canvassing of the election based on the proposed charter amendments. And we'll have to check to make sure we're not violating any type of frames between the canvassing or the swearing-in of the new council if it can be held at a special meeting.
Okay.
But we'll get back with you, Mayor.
How about this? If it's not on the 19th, how about the 25th, Monday? Or it's Monday, too?
Well, that would still be a special meeting. The only difference would be the timeframe would be further out from the canvassing.
Well, let's just go, we'll shoot for the 19th and see what happens. And what were you saying about the 6:00 PM for the fire station meeting? Is that going to be our next?
We're planning a 6:00 PM meeting for our citizens and the council, a 6:00 PM meal to break bread with the new council.
For the fire station meeting?
6:00 PM at the next council meeting.
20, or the 16th?
The 16th, yes.
Okay, that's the 16th. So that's the other. On the 16th, we'll have a special meeting about the fire station at 6:00 PM. All right, that's all I have. So we'll move on to item number, anybody has any questions? Nope. Item number 11 is discussion action, direct the city staff to bring an annexation process forward for approval of the city council in accordance with the master plan Pleasanton 2025. Councilman Garza?
I move to direct the city staff to bring an annexation process forward for approval by the city council in accordance with the master plan Pleasanton 2025.
Second.
Moving to second, to direct the city staff to bring an annexation process forward for the approval of the city council in accordance with the master plan Pleasanton 2025. Any discussion? There's none. Proceed to the voters. In favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 12 is discussion action to approve, approval of election judge Alice Vaughn and alternate judge Marshall Vaughn for May 9th, 2015 special election. Our interim city secretary.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the election judge Alice Vaughn and alternate judge Marshall Vaughn for the May 9th, 2015 special election.
Second.
Moving to second, to approve, the approval of election judge Alice Vaughn and alternate judge Marshall Vaughn for the May 9th, 2015 special election. It was Andreas's first item, and he didn't get to talk. It's all right. Any discussion? Mr. Garza?
Is there any conflict? It's a husband and wife?
No, I've talked to her with Ganesh. The lady's about 17 years old. I'm hoping to give up there.
So there's no conflict?
So you did get to talk. All right. Any other discussion? None proceeded. The voters in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 13 is discussion, our presentation discussion and acceptance of the drainage study conducted for Franklin Street. Our engineer and consultants.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last year, we had a flood that affected some homes on Franklin Boulevard, and that culminated in some action that we're taking towards doing a drainage project there. We've had Shibe Construction take a look at it, and he's prepared a preliminary engineering report on two alternatives for options to help fix a problem, or to fix a problem, rather. And one solution is an open ditch to control the stormwater along the rear of the lots on Franklin. Another solution involves a detention pond west of Florida Street. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eric Shibe for a PowerPoint presentation. And he will, he will present those options in a little more detail. And if y'all have any questions for me or for him, we'll hold them towards the end of his presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Eric Shibe. I was Shibe Consulting. And I put together a short presentation here about here. Let's see if I can operate this correctly. Okay, so we did focus our drainage analysis again on this flooding problem located. Where, it's not showing up. So with this being Franklin Road, this being Florida Street, and obviously north is pointing up at the top of the page. And there's quite a bit of drainage area draining that location. We estimated, you know, looking at aerial photos and existing city contour maps, existing city storm sewer information that was available.
Just to kind of orient everybody, could you point out Bryant's? Because they probably can't read it from the audience if they're just, just point out Bryant Street. It's kind of in the.
Yeah, and I'm not as familiar.
Except the very top.
Yeah.
Just to orient everybody.
Bryant goes into Florida.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the Aschelso River is over this way. And so right now, you know, all this drainage area ends up draining ultimately to this point. This is the point of where the flooding was occurring. And then everything ultimately drains to an inlet of sorts that then goes into a box culvert system underneath Franklin and then straight over to the Aschelso River. The box culverts, incorrect if I'm wrong, y'all, are I think five by seven box culverts. It's something to.
I can't correct you on that.
Okay. It's something to that effect. And the culverts right now that are installed behind all these homes, again, here's the homes right up here, and then there's homes right through here. And so there's two culverts that were installed right along here in the back of these lots. One was, based on my measurements at this upstream side, one was a 30-inch corrugated metal pipe, and the other was a 36-inch. So that gives you an idea, you know, about two pipes so big, ultimately draining into a very large box culvert system. Upstream of that is a natural open channel that goes through private property, and then everything drains in there. It's about 45 acres draining to it, all developed, as you know. And that's culminating for a 100-year event, which is, you know, 10 inches, give or take, within 24 hours. It's about 250 cubic feet per second. So to give you an idea, that box culvert that I'm talking about underneath Franklin, that can handle this 250 cubic feet per second, but those two little pipes cannot. And so it just overflows as what you guys had experienced. Typically, whenever I'm asked to do drainage project in most cities, be it for private developers or be it for communities, they ask that it be designed for the 100-year event. That equates to about a, the event would, as a probability of occurring, 1%, as a 1% chance of occurring within a given year. So this is an aerial, one of the proposed solutions. This one shows again, just to zoom in. This is Franklin. This is Florida. This is that open ditch. And right here is that inlet, and the big box culvert. Is to basically dig up the existing pipes that are in here and install an open channel. And I estimated about, is a little typical cross-section of the open channel. It's about 10-foot bottom width, you know, three-to-one side slopes, and a minimum of about two and a half foot deep at the upstream side. And it had to be a little bit deeper to add it with the Italian, existing culvert to 100 in Florida. And so that's one option that would work, And so that's one option that would work, and it would contain the hundred-year event and effectively convey it, but, you know, there would be probably a need for an easement along the back of there, removal of existing fences. We couldn't have fences going across it, so those are some factors to consider. And this is the other option. Now, this option is, we could keep the culverts in here, we could keep the existing pipes, but we have to detain a lot of the water upstream in order that we're not releasing it through this area so quickly. So the purpose of this pond is, again, to just hold the water back, it's just a small outlet, so it can all be conveyed.
Eric, could you explain one thing that was brought up, meaning by Mr. Pearson, that about the design on the detention pond, it would not have water standing in it theoretically after the rain was gone, etc.?
Correct, yes, so most detention ponds, and the ones that this, that this would be designed for, is to drain the pond within twenty-four hours of the rain. So once it fills up, it drains. It's not a retention pond, so it's not going to be holding water. It could be designed for that, if you wanted it, but that's not the way I've laid it out here. And this is about, let me see, about twelve acre feet of volume. And it takes up, you know, two lots and some nice real estate, you know, right along here. That could be used for future development, so those are, you know, things to consider. But it does work. And it's about, on the deepest part, which would be right in this area, so the pond naturally would drain down in this area, and so at this deepest part, it'd be about six feet deep, give or take. Again, on a preliminary level. There, because this pond is, is laid out over an existing creek, there's a possibility that, you know, poor engineers, four or four permits, and other fact, other things may come into play. Option, complicate the ultimate permitting of it. We did look at one other option, but the cost of it would just far exceeded these two. The other option that we looked at, we just extend this existing box culvert system up here, up, you know, up along Franklin, and then up Florida and over. But the slope of the terrain goes way up as you're heading this way on Franklin Street, and it goes back down, so you'd really be fucking great, and you'd have to dig really deep right through here. And the cost just seemed excessive, so we just said, well, we're not going to go into that one too much more. So this is rough costs, again, based on preliminary engineering, not based on construction documents. And, you know, this easement number is a placeholder, it's not, you know, based on anything other than just a rough estimate. An idea of cost for the open channel ditch that you might expect within a ballpark. And this is the regional pond, so quite a bit more expensive, takes up some nicer real estate, and there's this big unknown as to what, you know, the land cost, that is, again, for a placeholder. So with that in mind, my recommendation to the city, to the city engineer, and to the council is, is the first option, which is the open channel ditch.
That was the end, that was the last slide.
Yeah, so I was going to go back, I hit the wrong button. I was going to go back to the open channel ditch, but that was...
He got you back there.
Hold on just a second, she's trying to get it back up to the open channel ditch. There you go. Go to the press.
And so, all of it up to any questions or...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bass?
The removal of the existing fence, is that a city-owned fence to private property fence? Or, that's private property fence we're talking about?
Yeah, it'd be removed and reinstalled.
Reinstalled with a cedar fence. And approximately how much feet would they be losing, or would they be losing footage in the back of their, where the fence property is?
Yeah, so I estimated, so I estimated about, this would be roughly fifteen to twenty feet, so it would be seven-and-a-half to ten feet on each side.
Okay, and all of that is privately owned, or any of it's city-owned?
That is, that is more in reference to what the original design of the drainage was to begin with. We would have to buy easements from those property owners based on fair market value, and we would have to reestablish their fences.
Thank you. Other questions?
It would be an easement, they're still on the property, we just have the right to maintain the easement.
Going to the open channel option, would it, would, would the culverts be removed, or would not, y'all would not be going out, down that deep?
We would remove, the recommendation would be to remove the culverts.
Okay, now, in that channel, it's all concrete.
It's my understanding that this lower portion is concrete.
I thought, I thought from Florida, all the way down, it is, it was the concrete...
You're talking about the box culvert?
Yes, it's all concrete, isn't it? Yeah, there's a concrete box culvert there.
Right, right in this area?
No, all the way to Florida.
He's, he's, he's saying from here down to the...
John, from Florida, from that drainage on Florida, all the way down, isn't that all concrete, that is a concrete culvert? That they laid...
That's a pipe. When I was out, when I was out there, there was a grate right in here, and I looked down in there, and it was a thirty-inch and a thirty-six inch.
Well, I thought I, and Mr. Panawa will probably know more, because he is a resident there on, on Patrick, but I, I was under the impression that that concrete culvert ran all the way back to Florida, and then they just laid those pipes in there on it, and then filled it in.
But I, I don't remember what they did, but they must have concrete, all concrete, and then they put those big pipes.
On the concrete.
Well, of course, that's going to be, we're going to have...
Well, I'm just, my question is, how far down, and if the culvert's going to be removed, and if there is, there's some concrete down there.
Yeah, but it'd have to be broken out, because it's already, that, that, if I'm not mistaken, that culvert, that's, or that pipe that's underneath there is encased in the, in the...
If it's concrete down there, and it's an old channel, it can probably stay in place, but the pipe would probably need to be removed.
Robert Earl, do you know any more about that?
Uh, they had a box culvert, and they put another box culvert in both the city and bills, my dad lived in there. What I understand, there's a pipe that goes into cement, culvert, all the way, and they covered it over with dirt.
Well, that was my understanding, that that, all of that drainage was concrete, all the way to, to, from Florida all the way to Franklin where it ties in.
Because originally, it was just a drainage ditch, and it went into the box culvert on Franklin Street.
Okay, and my next question, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, because I, I believe that if that is all dug up, there will be concrete down there, but I may be wrong. But also, with this open channel option, I know that there's probably not any assurance, but the flooding that, that happened in that area, when we had the seven inches of rain overnight, the two houses on the east side of, of, before you get to that drainage there, were flooded, what, I mean, how much is this going to help that this flooding does not happen again?
Well, I can never guarantee the Noah flood would not adversely affect it, but it is common engineering practice to design for a one-hundred-year event, which again is in the range of ten, eleven inches within twenty-four hours, roughly. So I could confidently say that an event of that magnitude or less, this type of configuration should be sufficient, but I can, I cannot, nor will I ever say this will eliminate that.
Because when the city went in to clean that drainage from Bryant to Florida, with the amount of rain we had in a short period of time, and all the rain that ties into that drainage comes from every direction, and the velocity was just way too much to handle, and that's why we had the flooding, because those last two homes on the west side there, I mean, on the east side, they set up way high, way high above the street level, and there's, I mean, it's still, I can't understand why they were flooded, those last two homes. And there was quite a bit of damage, but whatever solution will help this, that it, you know, hopefully, none of those homes would ever get flooded again, that would be a, a big help, and a, just a peace of mind for those residents, because they're still quite upset. I was out there Tuesday, and they're quite upset about it still, so, and I don't blame them.
I think maybe a proper question for Mr. Shibe was based on the event we had, which was about eight inches of rain in about fourteen hours. Were those pipes that are in the ground now sufficient enough to handle that?
I can confidently say no.
That's the problem.
At least the, now, this sounds like there's some confusion about whether those pipes extend to full length, or maybe they transition to a box, so I can only speak to that initial inlet, those, those initial pipes that I saw, those are not sufficient.
I think, I believe that, in my opinion, that if that culvert would have stayed open, it would have probably worked, if it would have stayed the concrete culvert the way it was before we filled it in and gave them their property back and they extended their yard, because a lot of those yards, their backyard is not going to be very big at all. It's going to really be small. So, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Ms. Isra.
I'm wondering, okay, since I wasn't here during all this, so in the beginning, there was property that was given back to the residents, so there was a different drainage setup to begin with, and then we gave back property to them, and when we gave back the property to them, what's the deal?
Well, they had, if I may, Mayor, it's my understanding, Jenny, that they had given a drainage easement to the city, and they, you know, they were paying taxes all these years on that easement. So then, they wanted their property back, so it's my understanding that they were going to go and put these culverts in, fill it in, and then plant grass over there, which would extend their properties, you know, they, they had a bigger backyard, and that's the way it is now, so all of that drainage is under their yards. So if we go this way, they're going to have to give all of that up and move their fence back closer to their homes, where they're going to lose their backyards, some of it. So at one time, it was a natural drain, and then they went to the concrete channel that was open, and then we went to what we have now, that I believe is, was a major part in this flooding that occurred. So, yeah, they, they, they have a larger backyard, but now some of those homes have flooded.
This was done years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
This wasn't done just in the last year?
No, 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 it was years ago.
Or two years ago, this was done a number of years ago. All right, thank you.
Just to kind of stay on topic, have we talked to the owners that this will affect?
I've, I've had a discussion with one landowner that called me yesterday, just for some clarifications on issues, but no, we have not, we have not visited with the landowners to this point, we would wait for direction from council on which way to go.
Now, Mayor, too, Steve, if I may, I did go and visit all the residents, and I took them an agenda and the information that we have to everyone that, all the residents on Franklin, and, and then some on Patrick Street. So they were all aware of the meeting tonight, and they had the agenda and the recommendations, all the property owners.
Okay.
Mayor, I will say the one citizens that I spoke with yesterday is here this evening, Mindy, if she may.
Well, we will, Council's got to deliberate, and then we'll let citizens' comments, which we do have per on here. Does Council have any other questions? Alright, and I'm afraid I'm going to pronounce your last name wrong, so...
It's Byard.
Byard, okay, if you'd please come to the podium and... I've actually pronounced it right, so...
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address you omnipotensos. I've lived on Franklin Street for four-and-a-half, five years, so I did not experience the previous culvert. First of all, the pond thing, I think, is a terrible idea, even though you're saying it won't hold water, we have a terrible mosquito problem there, y'all have to fog our area, I've had to spray my yard, they swarm us, and I think my neighbors can agree with that, it's a swarm. And when you fog it, I mean, that's a health hazard towards children, the pets, the residents, everyone else, and it costs y'all more money, of course. Also, the pond, the way the water runs, it does run from the west down to the east, where those houses were flooded. The two houses that were flooded are right below me, I was not flooded, those two were. If you do the pond, you're going to run it east, from west to east, which is not the natural land flow of how it's graded. Also, I purchased the property for the land. The culvert, if it goes back to the old way, I will lose over half of my backyard, over half of it. That's going to decrease my property value, which I invested my retirement in for twelve years of teaching, so that I could purchase that house and that backyard. I considered the property as part of an investment in my future to compensate for the loss of half my retirement. So taking my yard, if it goes back to the old way, you're literally taking over half my yard from me.
It wouldn't go back, it would go to one of these two, you know, if it was the proposal that's behind you is what it would go.
Yeah, if that one goes in, that's perfect, but if you go back to the old one...
Well, that, we're not, there's only two options, it's this one or the pond, so...
Well, if you're only going to say...
That one's off the...
If you take seven feet from me, I'm, I'll be good with that. If we go the other way, it's terrible.
And plus, everybody would be compensated market value for the property for the easement, so...
Okay, and that's another thing I was concerned about, when you put this culvert in, is that going to mean there's going to be two fences? A fence for the properties on Patrick Street, and then a fence for the properties on Franklin Street.
Mr. Meding, could you answer that, or, or Mr. Shibe, could you answer that? She wanted to know if there was going to be a fence on both ends of this thing.
Like, there's going to be a fence on this side of the culvert for me, and then on the other side for Patrick.
I believe it's...
Let me tell you a few concerns on that. One thing is, there, in that neighborhood, there is tagging, spray painting, those kids are going to have access to that constantly. Also, we've had thefts in that neighborhood very recently, and that's going to give them access to our backyards, which is even easier than coming in.
It won't give them access, because in the deal, isn't there a cedar fence along both sides?
No, there's not, there's chain link on it.
Hang on just a second, ma'am, is there not a cedar fence, that was in the proposal?
In the process that I gave, it estimated the removal of existing fences and the installation of new fences.
So there is an installation of a new fence, if you read the proposal, it's in there?
Yes, but coming over the fence, you know, that's easy access, I'm just, my concerns, you know, I'm sorry. Also...
There's not a perfect solution, it's drainage in a town with a river, and it's difficult.
Yeah, I understand that.
And this is really, we've only got these two options, so...
Okay. Also, I guess y'all will be building the fences for us?
And I, and I'm not a contractor, I'm an engineer, so...
You won't be charged for the fence, the fence is in the proposal, that's, that's up to...
So y'all will pay for that then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I don't mind myself, and I've had injuries since then, and I don't think I can...
But it shows, could you go back, what, two, or go forward one slide, two slides? No, sorry, the other way, right there, you'll see, number three is the installation of a new cedar fence, and number two is disposal of the existing fence.
Okay, is there an estimated timeframe on how long this is going to take? It's going to be a true inconvenience, or...
It's either the inconvenience, or we just leave it like it is, so, I mean, we're trying to help you.
I understand, I understand, it's, it's just, I bought it, I put up the fence, I bought it because it already had a fence, except in one place, because I have dogs, so that's going to be me walking the dogs every single day. Another thing is, I just this week saw kids climbing out of the current culvert with the fence up, a bunch of teenagers climbing out of it, that's a concern.
Well, if they travel, they'll end up at the river park, at the river park.
Well, they were coming out of that culvert that's right at the end of those two houses that flooded.
I know exactly where you're...
Also, you were talking about the houses that flooded.
You can walk under this.
They were down in there, I saw them on the way home from work.
Could you get Mr. Meding their names?
Well, actually, there was a truck, sitting, a city truck.
Mayor, based on her comment, I will tell you, over time, the mayor, the, the city has done everything to try to secure that fenced area, there's razor wire on that fence.
They might have started at the river park and ended up over there, too.
Let's see, I know I'm taking forever, but I appreciate y'all answering my questions. And also, the properties that you talked about, they got flooded. They are up high in the front, but if you notice in the backyard, it slopes down, it slopes down, and that's why it went into the homes, because of that downward slope. There's other things you can also do, I don't know if you've heard of French drainage systems, the underground ones, which can also prevent that.
Sure, he is, he's a, he's actually an expert in the field.
Yeah, I'm just mentioning it. Let's see. I just would really like, I feel y'all have our best intentions for us, for the residents of the street, but I would like the city to provide each of us with a formal visit, providing a definitive information on the amount of land we're going to lost, lose, the amount of compensation for our losses.
All that will happen.
The replacing of the currently existing structures, along with a timeframe, you know, I think that would be fair, and have this done before a decision is rendered, because it's going to impact all of us, and I know some of my neighbors are here, and we're concerned about losing part of our property. I mean, seven feet, I can, I can deal with that, that's, that's not a big deal.
Seven to ten was the biggest, right? Ten was the biggest?
Yes, and that's always on the preliminary of the house.
See, that's what I'm worried about, too.
We have to do this before we can get to there, so...
But I, I appreciate your time, I just hope you would take some of the considerations into effect, and put razor wire up to keep them out again, because it's going to be easy access. And the city has changed since the, it has changed significantly.
We know more than anybody. Mayor? Thank you.
I have a brief, brief comment. I agree with everything Mindy said, I'm going to be leaving shortly in May, Mindy, and I just, this has haunted me that this happened in District Four. There's other lower areas in town, and they didn't get flooded, but anyway, so I'm, I agree with everything you said, I think the city needs to follow through, there's no doubt in my mind that they will, and, and do what's best for, for all the residents there, and I think there's at least ten residents involved in this, in this project, so I just, I hope it just gets resolved, and it works out for all the residents there.
Mr. Pearson, the way the agenda item was written, presentation, discussion, I believe we've already done that, as far as the end acceptance, are you going to tell us what you're...
Mr. Meding is ready to make the recommendation.
Alright, Mr. Meding, please.
It's my recommendation that Council direct city staff to proceed with design documents to install an open ditch to control stormwater along the rear of the lots that Franklin Boulevard for an estimated cost of eighty-one thousand, seven ninety-one, and that is unless y'all have reservations and would prefer to look at the detention pond option.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagels.
I have one question, I'll be ready to make a motion.
Please.
John, y'all, you're recommending a ditch and the engineer's standing open channel option, what's the difference? Or is there's no difference?
It's one and the same.
He's just using a different word to describe the same one.
Alright, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Mayor, I move to approve to proceed with, to direct city staff to proceed with the design document to install a detention pond west of Florida Street, and an outlet structure like, wait a minute, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, Mr. Gagels has the floor. Mr. Gagels has the floor.
I'm going to withdraw that and make a, a new motion. Okay, I move to direct city staff to proceed with the design document to install an open ditch to control stormwater along the rear of the lots that front on Franklin Boulevard for an estimate cost of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, and it be brought back to the council.
Second. Second.
The motion's second, we adjourn, all's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, pose the same sign. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shibe. And thank y'all for your comments.